We're going to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the City of Pacifica for Monday, March 21, 2016. Roll call, please. Or actually, sorry, report on the closed session, I guess.
Nothing to report.
All right. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Cooper.
President.
Commissioner Vatalas.
Here.
Commissioner Neblyn.
Here.
Chair Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Gordon.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
President.
All right. We're going to have a salute to the flag. Commissioner Evans, would you mind leading that?
Sure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans. All right. Oh, closed session report, I guess that would be now. Nothing to report. All right. Onto administrative business. Approval of the order of agenda. All right. Commissioner Neblyn.
I'll move approval.
Okay. Commissioner Gordon.
Second.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. Please vote. And that passes. Approval of the minutes for the meetings of February 16, 2016, and March 7, 2016. We'll take the February 16 first. Can't tell who was here and who wasn't here on this.
Well, I know I was here for...
Thank you. All right. Okay. So you were here. Commissioner Neblyn.
I'll move approval of the minutes of February 16, 2016.
Okay. Commissioner Vatalas.
I'll second.
We've had a motion and a second. Please vote. The commissioners present at that meeting have approved the minutes.
Chair, I'd like to speak. I'm not going to be voting on this next one for the minutes since I was not here.
Thank you.
Chair, I'd like to say the same. I was not here last week.
Thank you. March 7, minutes. Commissioner Gordon.
I move that we approve the meetings from March 7.
Okay. Commissioner Neblyn. Commissioner Vatalas.
I'll second.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. Please vote. All right. And those minutes are approved, March 7, 2016. Next, designation of a liaison to the city council meeting of April 25, 2015. Appeal of the anchor in.
Yes. We have two appeals, one of the anchor in project on San Pedro Avenue and a single-family residence on Stanley that we heard on the same night.
I'm going to take some volunteers for this. Anyone?
I'd be willing.
I'll go.
You want to do it?
Yeah.
Okay. Commissioner Vatalas, you are it. All right. Onward to oral communications. This portion of the agenda is available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. The time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. If you wish to speak on something that is not on the agenda tonight, please fill out one of these cards in the back and you can bring it up here. So far, I have one card. Ron Makele. Oh, just bring it up and we'll...
Good evening, Commission. I'm here just to speak up briefly on, as some of you may know, one of our planning department staff people is soon to retire. And having been a former planning commissioner, some of you know I worked with several of you in the past up there. But I just wanted to thank her for the many years of service she's done. She really, she's done a good job. So I hope that we all can give her that congratulations and wish her the best. I just want to say, as we all know, that land use in Pacifica is a very concerning and contentious issue. And I can understand how, at times, it would be very difficult for the planning department in that area and you commissioners as well. But anyway, I just want to congratulate Catherine and thank her very much for her many years of good service.
Thank you.
Can I just say thank you for that? I was really trying to avoid that, but thank you.
Just a moment while I weed through these. Okay. Looks like I have perhaps one more card from Daniel Fulani. This is something that's not on the agenda. Is that correct? It just says "speech." No? Okay. This is for, is this for one or two? Okay. Thank you. All right. Onward. Going to the public hearing portion of this meeting. This is for a general plan amendment, site development permit, and a parking exception filed by the owner and applicant Javier Diaz-Massias to change the land use designation of two parcels to low-density residential from very-low-density residential, to construct two single-family dwellings with approximately 400 linear feet of associated street improvements in the public right-of-way, and to deviate from on- and off-street parking standards at 50 and 60 Oddstead Way. The recommended California Environmental Quality Act, or SEQA, status is not subject to environmental review pursuant to Public Resources Code, Section 21080. And the proposed action tonight is denial. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair Campbell and commissioners. For the record, I am Catherine Farbstein, Assistant Planner for another month, and I will make the presentation for this project tonight. Before you tonight is a project to construct two single-family dwellings on separate parcels adjacent to Oddstead Way. Oddstead Way is an unapproved street in Rockaway Valley. Therefore, as part of this project, all necessary street improvements for the approximately 400 feet of Oddstead Way would be provided by the applicant. Each proposed unit is approximately 3,400 square feet of living area with an attached garage of 500 square feet. Both lots are 7,500 square feet in size. Project does require approval of a general plan amendment to allow the development on lots less than 21,780 square feet in size, approval which is half an acre. Approval of a site development permit is required by the R1H zoning designation for any development on either site. Approval of a parking exception is to allow the emergency vehicle turnaround on 50 Oddstead Way. Staff is recommending denial based on the project being inconsistent with the findings to support a general plan amendment, site development permit, and parking exception. Those findings and analysis are described in the staff report, starting on page five, also under item number five. Staff has received two comments on this project today. An email comment from Todd Bray expressing concerns regarding the design of the project was submitted. The second comment is a letter from the applicant's attorney, John Hannah, John Paul Hannah, in support of the project. Both comments were distributed to the planning commission tonight. Just as a point of clarification, that was the same letter that was emailed. I just want to make sure that you received it. The letter from John Paul Hannah, the attorney. That concludes my presentation.
Questions for staff? Commissioner Gordon.
Thanks, Catherine. So did we get Todd Bray's letter or comments?
Yes. There are two. They're paper clipped together. So the first one was the letter from the attorney, John. Oh, did I neglect to give you one? I apologize. I have another one right here.
Well, while we're getting that...
You're right.
Are you going to address that?
Thanks, Catherine.
Well, I've got a question for staff. The comment from Todd Bray inquired whether this was a driveway or a street. I think that's, I'm paraphrasing. I don't have it in front of me, but any comment on that?
He's referencing the Oddstead Way extension, and I think he's saying that it's a driveway, although it's difficult to speak for him. But I can say that, as proposed, it is in the public right-of-way, and it does need to meet all the city standards imposed by the engineering department, you know, in terms of the paving, the emergency vehicle access, the sidewalk. So it does comply with all the city requirements in terms of providing street improvements.
So it would be a street?
It is a street.
It is a street. Thank you.
He's referring to it as a driveway, but technically it is a street.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay. Then we're going to give the applicant 10 minutes to present his project. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. My name is Shirley Fulkey, and this is my husband Javier Diaz-Massias, who is the applicant for 50 and 60 Oddstead Way. Tonight, we'll be showing you our application, which, if you're curious, that house over there in yellow is intended to be our forever home to house our family of seven, whereas the other home is intended to be an investment property. So the application is for two 3,400-square-foot homes. Each of them are on 7,500-square-foot lots. It includes a 400-foot fire access road, and I wanted to note that it is outside the riparian area of Rockaway Creek. To establish a chronology for you, my husband did his due diligence. He met with the planning director at the time and confirmed the lots met their requirements and were buildable. They reviewed the zoning R1H standards, and it was made very clear that the minimum lot size for building was 5,000 square feet. With that in mind, he purchased lot number one and began pre-application work. Soon after that, there was an unapproved lot clearing in the area, which was not done by us. It stalled our application, and it caused a lot of neighborhood hostility. After that, we finished closing on lot number two. It took a couple of months, but eventually, we were absolved of any involvement with the lot clearing, and we were allowed to resume our application work. We submitted our application on July 28, 2014, and began the revision process. On April, we sent out a neighborhood outreach letter to 42 identified addresses. To date, we have collected nine signatures of support. On May 14, 2015, our application was determined complete. This was a very happy day for us. Unfortunately, that happiness was very short-lived, because not even a week later, there was a front-page Pacifica Tribune article, which was essentially the neighborhood response. They were anti-development. After that, there was, our application was really stalled by planning due to an inconsistency between zoning and the general plan. Because of a specific spot on the, on a nonspecific map that we fall in the general plan, we are labeled as very-low-density residential, VLDR. And according to VLDR, the minimum lot size would be 21,780 square feet. Now, this is a huge fundamental discrepancy, and it's very different from what was told to us in December of 2013. VLDR was never disclosed to us by the city until after May 2015. The city had failed us for two years while we continued to spend money. And we keep hearing that zoning is inconsistent with the general plan. But let's call a spade a spade when we're talking about the general plan. The general plan is unconstitutional when it comes to the rights of the VLDR landowners who have less than half an acre. This has been confirmed by your city attorney. How can the city expect our application to be consistent with an unconstitutional document? And despite this unlawful content, Pacifica has never denied or impeded a VLDR applicant from their right to build. Why start now? So after six months of legal review, the Pacifica city attorney and planning director offered us the option to seek a general plan amendment petition at a $20,000 cost. They described a process where our petition would be countered by planning. This never happened. Even so, before we knew this would not be honored, we voluntarily offered a huge compromise to the neighbors to remove one whole house from our application, which the neighborhood committee rejected. Now, the city began comprehensive VLDR study sessions in April and March of this year. Anything that comes out of these comprehensive study sessions should not apply to us, per California law, which leads us to today, where we spent an estimated $400,000. Our application status is complete, and yet, there is still no clarity on our application. Imagine you spending $400,000 of your hard-earned private money and the City of Pacifica telling you, yes, keep it coming. Okay, you're fine, you're fine, until your application is complete. And that's when the City of Pacifica tells you, wait a minute, we're going to start looking at things a little bit differently here. You would be angry, too. Furthermore, our application has stalled for 10 months. The planning department is not taking any accountability for failing us time and time again. They have offered no compromise, nor are offering any concrete solution to the general plan issue. The staff report reads like a dead end when it comes to the general plan. We can redesign all till the cows come home, but it's not going to stop you from rejecting our application because of your unconstitutional general plan. So our general plan amendment request is to change the land use map for the two lots to low-density residential. Our justification is the lawful content in the general plan, historical precedence, and site conditions. This is a screenshot from page 32 of the general plan. It specifically says that the map is not detailed or specific. The intent is to show the predominant use intended for an area. The map illustrates, sorry, the application is stalled. You're telling me that our application is stalled due to a specific location on a nonspecific map? How can you, why can't you just let the general plan serve its intent to be general? The amendment would not change the predominant intended use of the area. It's only for two lots. Now, we understand the spirit of VLDR, but what about the spirit of the general plan? It's not acceptable to cherry-pick only parts of the general plan, focusing on the map, the map, the map, and not acknowledging page 32. Page 32 is part of the general plan, and it must be respected. And when it is respected, we would be consistent with the lawful part of the 1980 general plan. The comprehensive problem by the city that they created 36 years ago is not our problem to solve. Despite your inconsistent documentation, we're clearly showing you that our application still aligns with the overall intent of the general plan. Now, I can only imagine that the reason that you don't want to acknowledge page 32 is because you might think that approving our application would set a precedent. Well, I want to squash that idea right now. It's not possible for our application to set a precedent. The precedent was already set decades ago, which is why our application now exists. The city has allowed VLDR development of at least 12 lots in the last 30 years in Rockaway Valley, and some with even worse designations, such as open space. Now, all but two are magically changing to low-density residential? That's exactly what we're asking right now. We are not reinventing the wheel with our request. This is already happening. Now, the general plan would still require the city to enforce the predominant intended VLDR use of the area, so any kind of arguments about cumulative impact would not apply in our case. And the neighbors are claiming that allowing our development will open the floodgates? Well, the floodgates were open decades ago, and there has been no VLDR development in the area for almost 10 years. So you tell me, where's the flood? Historical evidence just doesn't support this claim. You tell me on this map what makes our lots in green any different from the red applications that have already gone past us? Absolutely nothing. So we refuse to be held accountable for full build-out when our application is for only two homes. Past applications weren't subjected to this pressure, and cumulative impact is not possible. If you are still concerned that this application would set a precedent, then you yourself are acknowledging the importance of the past for a future. Please don't choose to be hypocritical. Acknowledge your past, and don't make a scapegoat out of our application. It would be a double standard, unjustifiable, and discriminatory. Furthermore, the general plan does call out site conditions. Well, our arborist report found completely invasive and diseased trees all over the lots. Our biological assessment echoed that sentiment, as well as other things. We have a detailed stormwater control plan, which applies to both the homes and the entire road. We have a comprehensive geotechnical and geological report that found our residents to be suitable. For fire, we have a new fire access road, a hydrant, a fire truck turnaround, and we're removing fire hazards. Now, for slope, this is a fabulous picture, because it shows that our house is with the slope in mind. And we comply with every single aspect of our R1H zoning. We exceed the Calgary standards. We adhere to your full-street policy, and none of these professionals identified any issue with your infrastructure. These are examples of neighboring homes in the area. Now, look at these homes, which are VLDR. They look pretty similar, don't they? So in summary, what more do you want from us? We have gone through every hoop that you asked us in order to make you feel better about a problem that you created 36 years ago. You have a moral and legal obligation to help our application. We have shown to be a patient, tolerant, and compromising applicant regarding this problem, which is the city's liability. There is a need right now for a family to build on their lots. We have children of kindergarten age, and my elderly in-laws are intended to live with us, and we're presenting you with a solution that works with your inconsistent documentation. We believe that the City of Pacifica needs an immediate solution, as well as a long-term solution for this issue. So we implore you to please continue to respect your landowners' constitutional rights in a fair manner. Please do the right thing. Provide fair support. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's work. Let's try to keep that to a minimum so we can have everyone speak and not be here till midnight. Please stay up there, because we might have some questions. Any questions for the applicant?
Not right now.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for your, you coming here tonight. It was quite the moving presentation that you had, and I really, you know, I'm heartened by your, the problems that you've gone through. I can really understand what problems you've had. I'd like to ask, you know, I was reading your letter, and I was reading through this package, and I'd like to ask you a question about your outreach efforts and what alternates you proposed to the neighborhood. I didn't quite hear what you had proposed to the neighborhood, or what you had really done in that aspect.
Well, we acknowledged that there was a VLDR issue, a density issue. We realized that we didn't have enough land to, according to the general plan. So we made a very huge sacrifice, and we said that we would merge our lots together into one, which would, and take away one home, which means that we would reduce our application by 50 percent.
Was it the same size of house that you generally had?
Yes. We didn't want to, see, this is our forever home, so we didn't want to make our forever home smaller. We were willing to basically do away with the entire investment property instead. We're going to house a family of seven. We want to be comfortable. My husband is going to build the road with his own money, you know? I mean, there's, we're giving up a lot. And now, on top of that, we were willing to give up a whole house, you know? And that's an investment right there.
How long ago was this?
That was, yeah, in December. In December.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. Just one quick question for my understanding. Number one, where it's, you talked to the planning department director to confirm before you bought these lots?
Yes.
And so it was the director, then, that you got this information from? And did he give you anything in writing or anything like that?
He didn't give us anything in writing. We didn't expect that we would have this, or be in this issue today. But my husband did go on numerous occasions, and I got the same response for him, because he was looking at different lots that were for sale in the area. So they looked at all of the documentation quite a number of times in that area, and each time, it was said to him that they did meet the requirements of 5,000 square feet.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Neblyn.
Thank you. I just wanted to follow up on something that Commissioner Cooper had been asking about. Your compromise that you had been discussing, did that involve anything further with respect to the lots, a merger of the lots? Or were you still anticipating having two separate lots at the point that you were looking at that compromise?
Our compromise was definitely to merge the two lots, so they would be one lot of, and that would make it 15,000 square feet. And it would only be one home, which was a 3,400-square-foot home. And we were asking, though, to, at least for us to have like a small shed in the back, and my husband wanted to kind of have a small office area, like a kind of standalone office for his work. But other than that, we were willing to do away with the entire investment property.
I see. Thank you.
Any other questions? No. I just had a quick question. Back in 2013, on the chronology, were you made aware back then of the road width requirements?
Road width? I don't...
No.
No?
I didn't know any road requirements at that time.
Yeah. I'm speaking specifically about 9-4.
The planning department didn't mention to us. I knew that I have to build and have to fund the road by my own, and...
Thank you. You may be called back up for more questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. At this point, I am going to open this up to public comment, and we are going to start
What's a good, good evening, commission and staff. I get to be number one on item number one. Well, what I want to say is, I'm not going to talk too much up here, because there's going to be a lot of people, but I just know, throughout this study session, you know, some of the commissioners were concerned about the complexity of this situation, you know? And I think, if I'm not mistaken, there were influences made about the need for staff to give some direction. And the staff has given direction, and it's clear, clearly in the staff report, is to deny the amendment to the general plan, the application for, you know, the amendment. So on top of that, I wanted to say, years ago, we had this similar thing happen where somebody was trying to, I call it almost kind of like subversion, but I suppose that's a little bit strong word, but we had property development where the property owners had lots on the other side of the creek, and there was a deed restriction that was placed on the lots on the south side of the creek, you know, because we didn't understood the problems with the creek and other traffic and stuff. So they had a deed restriction, and the owners of those property, they tried to get, you know, attempted to get that overturned, that deed restriction. Well, okay, well, they failed. Another time, there was somebody who owns property on Oddstead Way, where they tried to subdivide their lot, because they wanted to build a second home to defer the cost of putting in a fire truck turnaround in the street. A lot of money had to be spent to put those houses in there. But he was denied, because, you know, he had to keep with the zoning. So I just hope, I'd like to see you guys in the city be consistent, you know? It wouldn't be fair to those people that were denied earlier on, all of a sudden, for you to let these people get away with this. So be consistent, and I don't want to see a precedent set with these two houses being put, you know, built on what would be considered substandard lot, considering the zoning. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is Rob Greenwald, followed by Chaya Gordon.
My name is Rob Greenwald, and I've lived with my wife Kelly on Rockaway Beach Avenue since 1973. I have watched the neighborhood change for the last 43 years, all the vacant lots that have been built up on Rockaway Avenue. Traffic has doubled, as have the potholes in the street. But the city has done nothing to upgrade the street sewer system or tackle the drainage problems. I'd like to point out that safety issues have been mentioned at the planning commission meetings on February 16 and March 7. Rockaway Beach Avenue is a substandard street throughout its length. This was demonstrated earlier this year by the Rockaway Fire. People couldn't evacuate, because the fire trucks blocked the road. What would happen in the event of a major earthquake, or tsunami, or a larger fire? This condition exists now, tonight, for everyone living in Rockaway Valley. Safety concerns must come first, before adding even more congestion. The possibility... The possibility of lives and property lost should be the primary concern of the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission is neglecting its duty in trying to change the VLDR to LDR against the general plan's requirement for the proposed Osted Development. The proposed development also directly affects the aesthetic of the neighborhood by creating huge structures on already insufficient lots, blocking out the natural beauty of the area. Even if the proposed Osted Street addition was built to 40 feet width, which is actually 35.8 feet and 35 feet 8 inches, according to the plan that I have that was distributed to all of us, it would run into the Creek Bridge near its southern end on its way to join Rockaway Beach Avenue. The Creek Bridge is 22 feet 7 inches wide. Let me repeat that. The Creek Bridge is 22 feet 7 inches wide. The proposed construction would magnify the safety issues already mentioned. There is a colloquial expression that would apply to what's occurring in Rockaway Valley, could apply. If you find yourself in a deep hole and want out, the first step is to stop digging. Before considering new construction projects, the city should rectify the safety and drainage issues that we live with every day. The idea of adding to problems that exist now is a poor choice for our future and would reflect badly on the Planning Commission and the city we call home. Thank you.
Next up, Chaya Gordon.
I spoke about some of the specifics two weeks ago or whenever that was, and I don't want to repeat myself, although all of you were not here. But I think what's most important to start with is that there are very good reasons for your serious consideration of a moratorium on any construction. And I'm not just talking about Rockaway. I'm talking about all the Pacifica paper streets. I live on Rockaway, so that personally affects me most directly. But actually, my bigger concern is for the City of Pacifica. And it relates to why I wanted to live here and why I think most of us want to live here. Because it's beautiful. It's got the coast. It's got the hills. And I want to see that preserved. And until there is a complete thoughtful process to address all the concerns that this application has brought about, I think that the responsibility is to seek a really thoughtful, thorough solution. If it's going to involve changing the general plan, I'm sure you agree with me, that's not something that can be taken lightly, and there has to be a civic process for that. Meanwhile, at the last two sessions, and I'm sure tonight, many of us who have concerns about this application are going to talk about, in addition to the changing of the very low-density residential designation, which is in the current general plan, the issues regarding infrastructure and environmental issues and safety issues are big. They're really big. And we've got a street right now that is not maintained. We've got a street that's very dangerous to walk on. It's got water running down it, not just with this wonderful rain that we've gotten, but we've got water running down it all summer long. That's not a good thing. It's indicative of the area, and the applicant's side of the creek is a very wet area. So, that's just one little example I could give you of things that have to be very carefully considered. So, until the policies and practices for future development are formally integrated into the general plan, I understand that the applicant apparently is very angry, but whatever has gone on in the past should not affect your clearly looking at the issues and doing what is right for this area and for all of Pacifica, and I really urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Bill Bray, followed by Stephanie McAuliffe.
My name is Bill Bray, and I live on Rockaway Beach. Quite frankly, I'm not sure why this issue is still even under discussion. The infrastructure problems that exist on Rockaway Beach are clearly documented, and they have been verified. Everything from the sewer capacity, barely a month goes by that I don't see the city truck out there trying to clear blockage. We have drainage issues, as was just mentioned here now. They're getting worse, too. Part of it is due to the illegal grading that was done in front of the contested properties. Another issue that I haven't heard too much about are the huge tree limbs that interlace all of the electrical wires that run up and down Rockaway Beach. Tree limbs that all too often tend to drop right down in the middle of that narrow road. I was once locked up back there for about six hours. I could not even leave. I couldn't get out of Rockaway Beach. Not to mention the inherent danger if one of those things were to fall on a car or a pedestrian as they're walking by. But the biggest issue is emergency response, and that's already been mentioned as well. I can tell you that there are times on that narrow street where I have to squeeze by on my motorcycle to get out. Double parked trucks, cars that are parked right up to the center of the road makes it very difficult to get in and out. What's a fire truck or an ambulance going to do? I can tell you from personal experience that there's nothing quite like having somebody pound on your door at 3:30 in the morning to open that door, only to find the hillside across from your home in a raging fire. That'll wake you up, I'll tell you. Someone made a mistake. Fine. And I'm sorry for what happened to these folks. But in last week's Pacifica Tribune, there was an article that there are now 93 lots that are going to be up for, considered for rezoning, 83 of which are in Rockaway Beach. Folks, this is resulting in the piggyback effect. And to compound an existing problem by adding to that problem is simply not the answer. It's like discovering a hole in the side of the Titanic, and the answer is, well, let's punch 93 more holes into it. That'll solve it. The VLDR exists for a reason. It is there to preserve the character of Pacifica, a character that we are all very proud of, something we'd like to maintain. And if this is allowed to go forward, it could forever destroy that character. The decision that you folks make will have enormous consequences in the future. Once the development starts, it cannot be undone. The existing laws are reasonable, and I would urge you to stay with those. I will leave you with one final thought. Good of the many outweigh the good of the few. Thank you.
Next up, Stephanie McAuliffe, followed by Chris Coppola.
So, having seen you in action now, I really thank you for your services, Commissioners. I just wanted to speak in support of the staff recommendation. It's sort of amazingly detailed work and, I think, courageous. And I so admire people who can speak in analogies, and I just can't think of a better analogy than I believe Mr. Gordon said, you know, if you're in a hole, stop digging. And I think it would be courageous on the part of the Commissioners to stop, take a deep breath, address the issue of the impact on the somewhat weak infrastructure out there, and really help us think through how to make the neighborhood viable with some reasonable development and hopefully very low-density development. Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Chris Coppola, if I have that right, and that'll be followed by Joanne Wilson.
So, I've already spoken on the two other occasions about some serious issues that we face, both with infrastructure and the street. But I thought I'd tell you about last week in Rockaway Beach when we spent two days with a portion of the road blocked because the sewer pipe did collapse. And it is just one example of what will be happening throughout Rockaway Beach if we continue to not deal with the infrastructure needs. I also had, while I was going down to check on what all the guys were doing with the sewer pipe, I also was able to measure the street, Rockaway Avenue, east of Buell. And if you can picture, we have a large hill, mountain, I don't know, hill or mountain on one side, and on the other side, the creek. And there is no apron. The entire distance between the creek and the hill is 19 and 1/2 feet. So, no matter what we do or what we say about encroachment by the neighbors or concerns about that, it's not going to change that that, there are two natural boundaries there. And in order to make the street any wider and enable us to evacuate if there's an emergency, there's going to have to be a huge retaining wall, and there's going to have to be a pretty significant EIR about damage to the creek. The other thing that I just wanted to bring up was, it's still hard for me to understand how a 400-foot road will be only for one house. It just seems to beg that other houses will be built off of that street. And the last thing I want to say is that, well, maybe I won't say anything else, but the issue of getting a plan written and integrated into the general plan is not only important in terms of the future, but it also will save a great deal of time for you, for the community, and from the planning department. If we do this piecemeal, one project at a time, it's going to exhaust all of us. So, thank you very much. Please integrate it. Please have a moratorium. No building until there's a plan integrated into the general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Joanne, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Joanne Wilson, followed by Andrea Orello, if I have that right.
Hi. Thank you. I'd like to thank the planning staff for their recommendation to deny the requests, and I urge you to deny these requests as well. As stated by myself and my neighbors, the proposed project would defeat the purpose of the VLDR designation of the general plan, which calls for less-dense development pattern on the steep hillside area to avoid adverse effects from unstable slopes, limited emergency access, and visual impacts. If mistakes were made by city officials in explaining the density requirements to these applicants, that's truly unfortunate. However, the mistakes of city officials should not invalidate the general plan, which was developed after a lengthy public process with participation by many people and at great expense of the city. As I stated at the previous study sessions, many of us are concerned about the limited and aging infrastructure in our neighborhood. We're concerned about the cumulative impacts of building out all of these substandard-sized lots in the VLDR-designated areas of our neighborhood. As Chris mentioned, our antiquated sewer main recently collapsed, for example, of this aging, limited infrastructure. I was pleased to see the report, that your staff report included a letter from Hal Bonner. I would like to say that I agree with Mr. Bonner's assessment that if the proposed project were to go forward, it cannot be deemed categorically exempt from CEQA because CEQA contains exceptions to categorical exemptions, including with respect to disfavoring exemptions when cumulative impact of successive projects of the same type in the same place over the same time is significant. As the previous studied sessions, planning staff and Commissioners made several positive suggestions for addressing the conflict of the current R1H zoning with the general plan. For the good of the community, the City of Pacifica needs to give its planning staff adequate time and resources to work with the community to develop solutions. Please do not be tempted to approve a compromise out of sympathy for these applicants. We need time to resolve this. For that reason, I ask the Planning Commission to formally recommend to the city council that they adopt an urgency ordinance declaring a moratorium on development in the VLDR-designated areas with conflicting zoning code density standards until this issue is resolved. Thank you.
All right. Andrea Orello, followed by Mary Ann Willett.
Good evening, Commissioners. Andrea Iello, 708 Rockaway Beach Avenue. And I'd like to echo Joanne's call and other people's call for a moratorium. You know, piecemeal planning is not the way to do this. There are 93 lots in Pacifica. There's about 83 or so in the Rockaway Beach Valley that we're talking about potentially being developed. And I know that the staff report had a letter from another builder, another developer, somebody else who has bought land, saying that we're just waiting to see what happens with Mr. Diaz-Masias's property, and urge you to approve it because we're next. So, you know, approving one home or two homes is, that's not what you're doing. You know, you are opening this up for another one-by-one-at-a-time assessment of what to do with people who own property in very, very low, very low-density areas. So, I really think the way to go is a moratorium and to really step back and fix the problem that exists, that's been existing for a really long time. Thank you.
All right. Mary Ann Willett, followed by Jeanette Duarte. I might have that wrong.
I had my speech in my mind, but now I have to change it because I have to readdress that I bought my property back there. I own some, too. I had four lots that the city asked me to make into one, and I was told from, in the '80s, that I couldn't build there unless I owned this vast amount of property. That was in the '80s, okay? So, I know that the people that want to develop have known for two years that there's a problem going on. I don't know why they would continue to pour this money into this thing and act like this is kind of news to them because I've been making a lot of noise because they're the, they disclaim it. But some mysterious person named Mike Panesi came with a big shovel and put all this stuff on my property. I went back out there. I got a stop order. This road that he cut leads exactly up to their property, and there's like maybe four sites to there. And then it stopped right there after doing all kinds of damage to my property that's still never been repaired. No one has ever been held responsible for this. I guess it just is a figment of my imagination that this all happened. I heard her say she'd been absolved, but then who is guilty? Because no one's been found to be guilty. Yes, I did get a letter, another subject, from them, saying that they offered to make the sacrifice of building one house instead of two. The problem is, it was a little blackmailish in that it was, yes, we're not going to build this house and this house. We're going to build this house and this shed and this whatever, on property that's not legally buildable even for one home. So, no, I couldn't go with that. But I guess you could call it somewhat of a compromise. But anyway, I agree with the rest of the other speakers. I'd like to see a moratorium until the Sydney agencies are able to come up with information as to what really is going to work and basically what we can safely live with, all of us.
We still have blood in our veins.
We still, that damage that was done is still there. Nobody did it, and nobody's cleaned it up. So, thank you.
Okay. And let's keep comments from the audience. It's not going to make it in the record, and it just makes it harder to proceed. So, next up is Jeanette, Janet?
Jeanette.
Thank you. And your last name?
Duarte.
I did get that right.
Did.
All right. And that, you'll be followed by Stephanie Barnetto. Thank you.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm actually here in support of Mr. Javier Diaz-Masia. I'm actually here in support of Mr. Javier Diaz-Masias. I'm a forty-five-year Pacifica resident, and I understand this young couple is just trying to find their forever home, as she's mentioned, and I'm hoping that you can consider it. I'm just here in their favor this evening, that's all.
Thank you. Okay. Having a tough night tonight, followed by Kimberly Claussen.
I'm Stephanie Barnetto. I'm a Pacifica native and a homeowner here for over a decade. I implore the commission to see through this facade of concerned homeowners and not give in to their efforts to hold on what amounts to a view and an extended backyard, or as they call it, their paradise lost. But they do not own the land, and their continued anti-development position is illegal. Against my advice, my sister and her husband even tried to compromise with them by substantially cutting the project in hopes of finding some common ground. But the truth is, you can't compromise with anti-development. They just don't want anything built. As one Rockaway neighbor supporting the project wrote, "Build your home, build the homes you want. Don't be bullied." I've had to sit idly by and watch this group try anything and everything to prevent these homes from being built, even telling vicious lies and spreading false truths about my sister and brother-in-law, when in reality, they followed every rule and requirement laid out by the city, only to now, in the eleventh hour, be presented with this general plan fiasco created by the city itself. Last month, it was made clear at the study session that the general plan is unconstitutional. Still, neighbors expressed that they wanted to leave it, as is. They've spent the last year throwing everything they can at the wall to see what sticks, and now are leaning on this vague, unlawful description in the general plan as a stall tactic, until they can come up with another reason to infringe on their rights. My sister has been jumping through hoops for their home, responding to baseless claims, even paying to fix the city's mistakes. This is money that is being unnecessarily taken away from my nephew's futures, who are only three and six. This is a real family behind the application, contrary to what's being said, my family. The City of Pacifica is at fault here, but the worst part is that instead of making it right, they are dangerously giving credence to an anti-development point of view, not making any real effort to correct their mistakes, do the right thing, and take accountability for this mess. The efforts that this anti-development group has made against my sister's family home is beyond sanity. I know they outnumber my family, so it might be easy to drown out the facts and the reality of the situation, but the City of Pacifica should not give in to their misdirected irrational emotion. Instead, they should follow the highest law of the land, the Constitution of the United States, and allow my family to build on their land in fair time. I urge the commission to now take responsibility for what the city has caused and not give in to this anti-development group, because in reality, what they are requesting is unlawful and unconstitutional. Thank you.
Next up, Kimberly Claussen, followed by Kathy Salit.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Kimberly Claussen. I've been longtime friends with Shirley Diaz my whole life. I know her sons. They grew up with my son, who's actually in the crowd, probably the only child sitting quietly here. I am kind of outraged with the comments that one of the people made about the dirt on their land. I had a prepared speech, but I'm not doing it now, because it wasn't them, and she needs to address the person who actually did it. She has the name. So that's it for that. But they've spent so much time, energy, planning, proposals, everything, and even safety for the Pacifica, guess what? There's only three ways out of Pacifica, okay? I live on Crespe. I was affected by that fire too. They think that Rockaway is just this only little community. Pacifica is huge, and the sewer system throughout the city needs help, the roads throughout the city needs to be fixed. Shoot, I have potholes on Crespe too. And shoot, if you go on Carmel, just in Char Park, my father-in-law lives there. There's tons of safety issues, but you're putting it on this one property, which I do not agree with at all, when everyone around us is building. Everyone. In San Bruno, Half Moon Bay, they're talking about traffic? I'm like, anything that happens in Pacifica, if an accident happens, we're all blocked. So to blame these people to build on their, the property that they bought on, they should be able to build. The infrastructure is already poor. If Pacifica just works on the infrastructure, I think we could build up Pacifica to be wonderful and not to be dis, to not include is just hard when Pacifica is great for its inclusion. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, Kathy Salit, followed by Toni Domnishi.
Good evening. I'm here to support Shirley and Javier's application. I'm going to let others talk about the building and the environmental, I don't know that much about that. What I'm concerned about, what really angers me, is the planning department. These people started three years ago with this, with, they did everything with the Pacifica Planning Department. And they go three years into this, and at the last hour, they're told, stop. I have not heard what the, who's holding the planning department accountable to this. That's, it seems to me that that's where there is an issue. I don't, I don't know if they're incompetent, I don't know. They just found this thing, I don't know how it all came down. But I do know that these people, for over two years, have been fighting this and doing everything they were told with the okay of the planning department, who said, there's nothing wrong, keep going. And the eleventh hour, they do this, and that's just unconscionable. I, my hope is that something is done with the planning department and hold them accountable for this. Thank you.
Okay, Toni Domnishi, and then followed by Anna?
Dominski.
Dominski.
Doc Schamash. My name's Toni Dominski. I'm, live at 840 Rockaway, Upper Rockaway Canyon. I'm just going to talk on a different issue. About nine years ago, I have a metal fabrication company, custom metal fabrication. I got evicted in San Francisco and had to move because of a redevelopment issue. I looked at over seventy properties everywhere in the Bay Area. I wanted to stay on this side of the Bay. I couldn't. I went to the East Bay. I found my dream property, what I thought was my dream property, for my industrial business, not my home. I spent a lot of money and I did a lot of due diligence, like these people did, but I think maybe they missed something. I did a lot of due diligence, and at the eleventh hour of my, I was in escrow, and I actually had a Phase One and a Phase Two done environmentally. My environmental attorney found that there was a letter from the water department that was sent to the previous owner saying that the, that it was contaminated, and this was the only thing that came up in the eleventh hour of our escrow. I had to walk away. I had lost like thirty thousand dollars from that. That may not be as much as these people have, but my point is, there was ambiguity here, which they even admitted to, that the general plan and the zoning didn't quite agree with each other. And I think if I was going to go into this, I would want to get that in writing, and I would want to have a clarification on that that was really clear before I went any further. All my other neighbors, I want to say that they're not anti-development, they're for sustained development with a reasonable general plan and a zoning that matches, and I think the general plan has been done with a lot of due diligence, and it can't be ignored. I don't believe it's unconstitutional. So I would like you to accept this, your staff members' professional opinion and vote no against this amendment. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having this meeting. I just want to say, as frustrated as these people are with the, with their applicant, with their application for their project, that the neighbors are even more frustrated because, you know, we, I know that we came to Rockaway Beach Valley because it was low-density, and across the street from us, it was very clear in 1989, very low residential density. That was very appealing to us at the time. So if we knew in 1989, I wonder why these people didn't know. And when you buy a piece of property, it's a very serious thing. It's not buying a piece of celery at the, at the supermarket. You're putting, you're investing a lot of money, and it's your responsibility to know what you can build there. I know I can build on my property, and if I want to change it, I have to go through all these hoops and do it. Our neighborhood is not anti-development. I'm, I'm anti-people trying to build on property that they're not supposed to be building on. This is very low-density-zoned property. I have a solution, two of them. First, the moratorium's a very good one. The other one is that very low-density says seventy-five-hundred feet for one house. I mean seventy, it's seventy-five-hundred, right? We all agree? Very low-density?
An acre.
On one acre. Okay. So what I think would be fair to these people is do a percentage of feet, allowable feet, to what they have. Right now, they have 5,000 square feet, so they don't actually, they can't build a big house on there, but they could build a smaller house there. So their family, their forever home, dream home can be built. No one's saying you can't build that. But in consideration, maybe that's the way to go for right now until a moratorium is developed. But I don't think, I think it's greedy, actually, to say, I want to build two giant, enormous homes with all these doodads, a big, giant driveway, in very low-density. It's not fair. It's not fair to our neighborhood. So do the moratorium, or do some kind of proportional square footage to the amount of land they have, or talk to your other neighbors and buy some more land and build a big, giant house on one acre. I think that would be fair. So that's all I got to say, and thank you once again.
Okay, George Salit, followed by Daniel Fulani.
Good evening. I'm in favor of building the homes. I've been up in the Rockaway street there for my business, and half the places should be torn down. But that doesn't mean they shouldn't build theirs. The buildings are not that outrageous compared to the other buildings on the street. As you can tell, I'm deviating. So that's basically what I want to say. I think they should do it. There's been some problems. It's too bad they don't have something in writing. But basically, if you don't want more people building next to you, you should buy those empty lots. Thank you.
All right, next up, Daniel Fulani, followed by Karen Rosenstein.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Fulki, resident of Pacifica for more than thirty-four years, and all of them with pleasure and happiness. It is great to see too many people here today, all of you, my neighbors. The reason of my presence at this hearing, proposed development, is to support Mr. Javier Diaz. Friend, this is too difficult and hard to understand what the City of Pacifica and the planning department is doing, is not, in not letting Mr. Javier Diaz finish the project of his dream house, even though he did follow all the procedures, and in the end, he spent a lot of money and time. If you put yourself into his shoes, you will understand the magnitude of his frustration, especially seeing it was approved by the City of Pacifica and the planning department. This issue was created thirty-six years ago, and supposed to be revoked in the 1990s. It was brought up from one group of people. Really, really, this is not fair. I would like to express my gratitude for giving the opportunity to speak today, and looking forward for Mr. Diaz to study the completion of his project, like you all had the privilege to build your dream house without issues. Please give me, give him the same chance. Thank to everybody for the interest of this matter, and all whom support Mr. Diaz, my eternal gratitude. Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, Karen Rosenstein, followed by Denny Ashes.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. My name is Karen Rosenstein. I live at 200 Troglia Terrace. I'm happy to see the recommendation of staff is to deny this project as proposed. This is consistent with what happened several years ago at my end of Oddstat Way, when the then-property owner proposed splitting his three-quarter acre into two equal pieces before building on it. More importantly, this honors the zoning we currently have on the property in question, the wishes of current Rockaway neighbors, and will give the Rockaway neighborhood and the city time to finally address the problems that we face in our neighborhood, AKA moratorium please. I do understand the frustration of the applicant, as expressed in his letter to planning staff that I saw in your packet. Unfortunately, it seems that he didn't quite do enough research. As those of us who have worked with former planning director Lee Diaz know, he was fond of wanting to build out Rockaway. I also would like to share with the applicant that while you might see this as your dream home plus one, you're not the one living there during the months of noise, dust, roadblocks, and more that construction will cause to impact our lives, families, and homes, and the loss of peace and quiet that many of us treasure here in Rockaway. I want to point out the planning, while we are talking about paper streets, one of the problems that is caused by requiring these new homeowners to be responsible for the maintenance of the street and infrastructure after building. We just replaced our sewer lateral at, which meant tearing up part of Troglia in front of our house. Right now, that part of Troglia is the city's responsibility. If my end of Oddstat is built out, then that part of Troglia then becomes part of the private street maintenance agreement from the corner and, excuse me, from, and with the part of Troglia from the corner to about my mailbox, remaining the city's responsibility. So my driveway is literally the dividing line between those two parts. That means, in addition to coordinating with the city, the weather gods, the plumbing company, I'd be adding to that list a neighbor or two who may or may not live in that house to resolve problems like that. As we all know, the more parties involved, the more complicated things become, and the longer they take to get done. Problems like this need to be part of the discussion regarding paper streets in Pacifica. Thank you.
All right, next up, Denny Ashes, followed by Panket Argawal.
Good evening, Denny Esness. Thank you. Sorry, I did not write very clearly, so. I live on Rockaway Beach Avenue, and I echo the knowledge and eloquence of my many neighbors. Once again, I stand before you with grave concerns about the proposed development of Rockaway that will go against the intent of the very-low-density residential designation for the area. I strongly urge a moratorium on any construction on Pacifica paper streets until there's a complete process to address all the concerns that have been raised on this matter, and until policies for future development are formally integrated into the general plan. I really appreciate your listening carefully to the residents and to the concerns of the residents of Rockaway. The applicants say they want to build their dream house, but the way they are going about it will contribute to the destruction of a dream neighborhood and a dream city. I look forward to the time when all of us who are being called anti-development can use the planning commission's time to talk about building affordable housing in Pacifica, which so many of us feel is so strongly needed, and fixing, and also talk about fixing all of the varied infrastructure problems in the city. I urge you to follow the staff recommendations. I urge you to follow the staff recommendations. Thank you.
Next up, Panket Argawal, followed by Kevin Casey.
I'm going to give back my time. I think enough has been said. Thank you.
Kevin Casey, followed by Carol Fregley.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Kevin Casey. My home is right in the middle of all this. My, it's the house, right on, first house on Oddstat. I just want to say for the record that Shirley and Javier had nothing to do with the bulldozing that was done that caused all the damage. That was done when the flag lot was going through its zoning periods. Whoever owned the flag lot is the one who came in with the bulldozer that time, did all the damage. But that damage is still there, and whether or not you decide to go ahead with this plan or not, there's some problems that that bulldozer caused. The water that's coming off the hill right now is not going into the tributary that leads into Rockaway Creek. This weekend, we had a lot of rain. So much rain that I took a photo of the water only four inches from the top of the culvert hole. Okay? That's how close it got to the top, four inches. It's a big hole. I walked through that hole in the summer. So that's a problem. At the same time, the tributary that's on the south side of Oddstat was dry because of the work that was done by the bulldozer, where it cut off the flow of water. There's actually huge puddles now at the top of Oddstat where they're planning the development. That needs to be addressed. So it's whether the plan goes ahead or doesn't go ahead, that water buildup needs to be addressed. I have a photo from YouTube, or not YouTube, Google Earth, you can go on Google Earth, take a look at the photo that was taken this summer. You can see the lawn behind my house is brown, because I turned off my sprinklers because they're out. But all around me is green, 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 green. This is must have, photo must have been taken July or August, and it's all where the water flow is coming down towards my home now. This is just something that needs to be addressed. Again, whether or not you decide to do something, this is a problem that's kind of come down in the end. So, thank you very much.
All right. Carol Fregley, and that is the last card. Oh, we got one more. And then James Pickarel after that.
Hi. My name is Carol Fregley, and I live at 727 Rockaway Beach Avenue, which I think is one of the houses that that gentleman suggested should be torn down. I, however, love living there, and so it's a, like, 800-square-foot cottage, which was the original design for Rockaway Beach Avenue. You know, that's kind of how it started. So one thing I have to say is, we are absolutely not pro, anti-development. Since I, I moved to Pacifica in 1994, and there were many small lots, half lots, lots that have been built on since that time. I mean, phenomenally filled in the spaces that have been available. None of us have ever been upset about proper building with consideration for the neighbors. What we get upset about, I think, is when these huge pieces of equipment are dragged up our street and they tear up what's already a substandard street and degrade it. And then these people sell these houses for large amounts of money. The neighbors, neighborhood has been disrupted, the street's been compromised, and they leave. So last time I was here, I said that I was going to look into this thing, the escrow fund that we could get, the planning commission, and maybe, I don't know, the Department of Public Works or somebody to put together, where you would get money from developers or contractors or anybody who's planning to do that kind of work. Put it into an escrow account, and I found out that there's actually a name for this fund that other cities use. It's called an impact fund. And what they do is, they have a fee. That money sits in an interest-bearing account. It generates, you know, some more money, and then when they get, every five years or so, they use that money to make improvements to streets, curbs, that have been degraded or compromised by construction. I know it's one more construction fee, and I've done work on my property, and I know we get hit hard, but it seems fair to do that. The last thing is, and I think the most important, what I talked about last time, was providing a survey. So I've given you my cards, because I would be very happy to help you do a very simple Survey Monkey, five-question thing, that you could send out either through the emergency contact list or through the list that they use for voter registration, and contact the neighbors in Rockaway, Valamore, Pedro Point. Ask them what their concerns are. There are paper streets in other areas, too. We're not, we're worried that they're going to do something that's going to make a big problem geographically or, you know, somehow destroy the environmental balance of the hills behind us. That's something you should be concerned about, too. You're the planning commission. Get input from us to help you plan, so you don't run into these kinds of problems again. I think our being proactive is not a bad thing. I think your being proactive is not a bad thing, and I think we can work together. Thank you.
Next up, James Pickarel, followed by Joe Davis, which is the last speaker I've got.
Let's see. Oh, I got a clock here already. That's wonderful. Just gonna use my phone, but won't do that. Hello, everybody. My name is James Pickarel. I'm also a resident of Rockaway Valley. I want to first say that I am fully in support for safe and effective property development, and I also want to empathize with the property owners, because their situation, you know, spending as much money as they didn't have been is a huge blow to their personal investment. And I want to speak on behalf of, I think, almost all residents of Rockaway Valley. We don't want to see anybody in that kind of position. If you need some more information, you can go online to www.jamespickarel/rockawayvalley. I'm not egotistical. I'm just a broke college student who can't pay for his own website, but if you want some more information on whole document, a whole bunch of documents in regards to the Rockaway Valley and development of Rockaway Valley, you can check it out there as well. Let's see, as one family member had mentioned, however, she talked about the reality of the situation and the reality of this construction project, that it is, it is a dangerous idea. And I feel that as a resident who has grown up on the street for almost 24 years, I can safely say this development will begin a huge snowball effect, and I believe it will increase situations like these in areas where we will have more unsafe areas to build. Consider the issues that we have today, and we've already addressed those, but an issue I feel that does need to be addressed is, which has not been, is how future apparatuses can access areas like these in the future. And what I mean by that is, the fire that happened in January of last year was attacked on dual sides. There was a attack from up top and an attack from below. And if you look at the area that's densely populated there, my fear is that having one access road will only prevent you, will prevent future firefighters and apparatuses to be able to fight fires effectively. There's only one access road, it's very densely populated, and it's home to a whole bunch of wildlife. And we were very lucky, as Rockaway residents, to be able to have professional crews attack from two different areas. That was a six-lime fire, and we had to have responders from different parts of the peninsula come in to help out, to help mitigate that issue. The issues that we have today needs to, need to be addressed and executed as a planning department. We have evacuation routes that have not been designed. We need to have a backup evacuation route, our densely populated area, our road conditions on the street, the fire hazards that I had imagined, and pedestrian hazards. The younger sister, who was almost killed by a tree limb. The tree limb was twice the diameter of myself, and that was not addressed. You need to look at these things on a daily basis and execute those things as your job. I look forward to you guys taking the right route, and I trust that these issues will be addressed. Thank you so much.
All right. Joe Davis will be my final speaker, our final speaker for tonight, unless there's more cards out there.
Hi. Thank you for your time, staff and everybody. I'm Joe Davis. I may be one of the newer residents in the Rockaway Beach area, and I've been there 14 years. Moved in 2002. Love the area, and personally, it would take a little offense to saying that half our homes should be knocked down by a certain plumber. That seems a little ridiculous, but that's not where I'm going to go. I've spoken in the past about the street and what we all love about our towns, and not necessarily against anti-development as well, but just smart development, what's going on up here in Fassler lately. You know, it's, that's mind-boggling. But basically, things have really changed in the last 20 or 50 years. When we had the paper streets outlined and people buying, you know, lots years ago, they knew what they're up against. So there was a reason why the city didn't build three streets through Rockaway. And I appreciate what Mr. Pickarel just mentioned about the fire that happened last year. I couldn't imagine if we had two more streets, us trying to get out of there, it just, it wouldn't happen at the current state it is right now. And I really appreciate what all the neighbors have brought up. I think they've covered every point. My new point I like to bring up is that not only do we have changes in waterways, but we actually have a new spring. Well, I'm sure not just we, but I have personally seen a new spring that popped up in front of my neighbor's house just over the last weekend as well, and it's deteriorating his driveway. Well, things have changed again the last, you know, 20 or 50 years. As neighbors have mentioned, the river back there and the creeks, springs popping up, it's a, it's a unique area, and for those reasons, you know, maybe one house or two that we put in the middle in Rockaway that we've had to deal with over the last 10 years is one thing, but not two more streets going through. And again, there's a reason why it's been halted many years ago. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay. I don't see any more cards, so I'm going to bring this back to the, oh, well, I'm sorry. I'm going to ask the applicant if they would like to respond to the comments that were
Okay. Well, there were a lot of comments that came out, so I'm going to try to address them quickly. The first thing is that we sent a letter out to the neighborhood the first time. You know, we waited for the neighborhood to get back to us. They had our phone number. They had many ways to contact us. We waited, and we waited, and we waited. The only call that we got was from the Pacifica Tribune, okay? And that Pacifica Tribune article, if you read it, says that they wanted to keep that area undeveloped and in pristine condition. That is anti-development, okay? The, they also, they shut us out completely from the neighborhood. When we sent our second letter, we waited for them for an hour, hour and a half at Pacifica Seabowl to talk, to try to compromise. They're saying that they're open for development, but nobody showed up. You know, and then they sent us a letter that says that we, that, that they just aren't, they want to see us rejected. Like, what kind of compromise? What kind of not anti-development is that? How does that show it? And then when we were at the study sessions, it's very clear, your general plan is unconstitutional, and they wanted it to stay the way that it is. So how is this not anti-development? I want to understand. You know, and then, now they're, they're saying they're okay with, with, with development. So, and, but we're being called greedy, okay? We're being called greedy. We were, we offered to give up 50% of our application. If we merge our lots, let's talk math here. If we merge our lots, we are only missing 31% of land in order to be aligned with your unconstitutional general plan, 31%. And yet, we were willing to give up 50. So how's that from numbers for you? Okay? And, you know, Mrs. Willett is saying that our letter was blackmailish. You know what Mrs. Willett said at your oral communication? She said that Javier Diaz Macias was lying to the neighborhood, was part of a five-contractor conspiracy ring, and that he was only there to make a profit and basically, like, rape the land or something. We're a family. I have children. You know, we, we're trying to build our forever home, and this is just completely wrong. And during your study sessions, you said that lot merger was a good idea and that you would consider giving extra square footage to somebody who voluntarily merged their lot. Oh, and I have another thing about Mrs. Willett. She does have a named individual who was on that backhoe or whatever it was, and she had his name. It took my husband and I maybe like 20 minutes, half an hour, looking through city records to find an individual with that name who owns land in that area. Like, how hard is that? How can you keep, our lot was not touched, and, and she keep, for a year after we were absolved, she continued, continued to say that we had something to do with the dirt. We had absolutely nothing to do with it. Your general plan is unconstitutional, and I don't know what else to say about it.
Okay. We got some questions, if you don't mind. And, no, she cannot. I'm sorry, it's just, it's just, the rules don't allow it. Commissioner Gordon.
Hi there. Question for you. So you said that the general plan is unconstitutional. Can you explain why?
Yes, because it says that lots in VLDR require 21,780 square feet, yet our lots were subdivided before 1980 to the size that they are now, 7,500. So when the general plan was adopted in 1980, it was automatically unconstitutional because it basically forgot about these lots. And there's a value in these lots for building. That's what they're for. And so when you, you're basically, it's the Fifth Amendment, you're taking the value of our land.
But you're requesting a general plan amendment so that you can build on it. So how would that be denying your, the value of your land?
Well, it's, we're being denied. That's what I understand. I understand that we're being denied, or we're being asked to be denied for our amendment request.
All right. Let me just direct you to, the denial says, "For the project as currently designed..."
Right. Is there's a page? Let me see.
That doesn't sound like an absolute denial to me.
So...
That sounds like what you put forward isn't necessarily going to be approved, but that doesn't sound like a, that the city's shutting the door on you develop, you coming back with something else.
Well, I, honestly, I don't know how this works. I just, I'm reading that our application should be denied, and I'm reading a very...
It says "as currently designed."
What I'm reading, and this is, I don't even know, it's, it's just, it's like nine? I don't know. It says that the proposed development is inconsistent with the general plan. So then there's a statement here. "The proposed development is inconsistent with the general plan and requires a general plan amendment. Staff recommends denial of the general plan amendment," which would leave the proposed development inconsistent with the general plan. So it's like, it's leaving us nowhere. It's like a dead end.
No, it's, you're just, you're not reading the part where I'm directing you to, that's all. It says "as currently designed." That doesn't sound like a, anyway, thanks.
Okay.
Okay. I've got a question. I just want to, this doesn't have anything to do with the general plan, actually. It's kind of a plain vanilla, planning and zoning issue. Going back to the roadway and the width, is there any controversy that you've got with, I mean, we have an existing rule of a 20-foot maximum width?
We haven't received any controversy, no. Not that I know of.
Okay. But it seems like the proposal's for wider than that, and I was just wondering, again, was that discussed? I'm looking at your timeline back in December 2013.
Yes. Commissioner, let me bring my civil engineer.
Sure.
Yeah. Commissioner, what is the question about the road?
Yeah, my, my question is regarding the, the maximum allowed width of the road under It seems like it's, it's double the allowable width. Can you explain that?
I'm not, good evening. I'm Javier Chavarria, and I'm just a civil engineer on the project. I became involved to helping with the grading plan and the design of the improvements for the street. We coordinated with the engineering department, and the road was designed as directed by engineering. So I'm not right off the top of my head familiar with the section that you're citing. If you tell me what this section says, maybe I can answer more accurately.
Let's see. It says, it's on page nine. This is on page four, Section 9-4, which, access to parking facilities, which states that the driveway width shall be a maximum of 20 feet, but what was proposed was double the width?
The very initial proposal was a 20-foot road, which the fire department declined. So we met several times with the fire department, and the road as designed currently is per the direction and requirements of the fire department.
Quick question for staff to clarify that.
So I...
So I think that there's a confusion. There's the roadway width, and then this, section C is talking about the driveway width on the property.
Okay.
Separate from the road.
Separate from the road. Okay. So it's the road width that's the, the issue?
No.
No, it's the driveway width.
It has to do, on Lot 50, there's two driveways. One driveway is to the two-car garage, and the other driveway is actually, functions as an emergency turnaround. So for fire trucks or whatever, to be able to pull onto the site and then either back up or whatever maneuver so they can leave that area. There is no cul-de-sac. It's not a through road. So this was a way to allow emergency vehicles access to go, get down there, fight the fire, and then turn around, get back out again.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Thanks for explaining that. Commissioner Nebelen.
Just one other real quick question. I'm looking at page nine of the staff report, and there's a reference to the Open Space Task Force report on parcel 21. And what the staff report says is that you all elected not to present the project for consideration, and I just wanted to check in on that and see if you all had anything else you wanted to say about, you know, sort of the rationale, or...
So all I remember personally was being sent an email saying, hey, just to let you know, this is the Open Space Task Force report. I don't remember it, anybody suggesting that we contact anyone. It was more like, hey, this is for your reference. So I don't know where that came from, where we kinda declined something. I don't recall personally doing that, and I asked my husband when we read that too, and he said that he didn't remember that either. So I'm not sure where that's coming from.
All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. This question might be for Javier. I'm gonna get you to stand up again, Javier. Sorry about that. And it might not be for you. In that double-width driveway, and I understand why the double width there is for compliance for emergency vehicles to turn around, and that also pulls up the parking exemption. Is it not feasible to mirror those two home plans to where the two driveways are together and make that your turnaround rather than having a third driveway? I know, I understand you'd be changing things, but it, it might have a, an effect on the parking exception, if nothing else.
Correct. We actually evaluated several scenarios with the fire department, and their concern is that the, the hammerhead, which is created as a turnaround, must be an area that is kept clear and free at all times. So incorporating a turnaround with the driveways was a very impractical solution for the fire department. So the only way that we did it, it was pushing it as it's shown in here so that it has enough forward space and enough turnaround for them without being interrupted by the traffic coming in and out from the driveways. And those areas will be, in fact, the entire street will be red painted. There is no parking allowed unless it is on the parking bays that are proposed.
Understand. You don't wanna put no parking sign in your driveway, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We may call you back for questions, but I think we're gonna bring this back for deliberation. Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. You know, I've heard a lot of great discussion here tonight, and I'd just like to remind everybody that, you know, there, there is a human factor here, and there is families involved, and there's a lot of money involved. So, you know, when you're discussing and you're presenting in front of the board, it's very helpful to stick to the issue and, and what we're talking about here. I think there was, there was a really good point that we don't wanna see anybody in this position. This is not a fun position to be in. We're here to resolve the issue. That's why we're here, the Planning Commission. And so I do appreciate all the comments, the passion for family, the passion for the neighborhood, the passion for each other. So, so that is important to us. But we really have to look at, there is a conflict. There's a conflict between the zoning ordinance, and there's a conflict between the general plan. They don't, they don't mesh. That's why we're here today. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here as an issue. So as a commissioner, I'm looking specifically at this application that's before me today 'cause I cannot resolve the general plan alone, and no, the commission can, cannot resolve that general plan issue alone. So looking at the particular application that we have before us today is really what I'm concentrating on. So looking at that and listening to the discussion, there's either we find that there's an exception to the general plan, or we modify the general plan. Obviously, the modification takes a little bit longer. We could find an exception to the general plan, but there are several factors that, at least as commissioner, that I would look to consider. And the two factors really are, does it provide access which is safe and consistent with the level of development? So you have, I asked myself, I said, what is that level of development? Are two 3,400-square-foot homes proper for this point of land where I could see it consistent with the level of development within that neighborhood? The other is promote an orderly growth, and that one I have a little more strong of a feeling towards because just providing exceptions to 85 different parcels is really not an orderly method from which to promote it. But I concentrate really on this, what is before us in this application as a home that's consistent with the neighborhood? Is it a proper building for the neighborhood? Does it take into account the safety of the neighborhood? I heard a lot of consistent information about safety, about sewer capacity, about all those other issues for that neighborhood. But does this application affect any of those? Does it affect it in such a great extent that would put you all at detriment? So looking at the application very individually, I really have to go back and look at these particular homes, the way it's presented in front of us, and whether or not it affects that particular aspect of this. The other element would be to modify. I did hear some wonderful suggestions from the neighborhood, just like we did in the planning sessions, of potentially a method from which to resolve this issue between the zoning ordinance and the general plan. Those are the types of things, that's a route we could go. We could go down that route. And that is obviously something that we would wanna consider. So just to bring it up to the fellow commissioners, those are the types of things that I was listening and I was hearing about when I went through this, is that either there's an exception that exists to the general plan from when we evaluate the project, or we modify the general plan to deal with this in a very orderly fashion and set some parameters and some rules with everybody's involvement. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you, Commissioner Cooper. Any other comments? Commissioner Nebelen.
Thank you. I, I think Commissioner Cooper has really gotten us off on, on, kind of the right foot in terms of analysis. And I guess what I'd say is that I, I certainly would be supportive of, well, I wanna be really clear, these, this is in my view, these lots are ultimately lots that would have to be buildable in order for us to remain on the right side of constitutional law principles. I don't believe our general plan is unconstitutional. I do believe it could be applied in an unconstitutional way if we, if we were inclined to, but I don't think anybody on this commission is. So we do, however, have to look at what the general plan says and what it's trying to do with the VLDR. And I think that the staff report very well, on page six, lays out, you know, some of the factors we ought to be looking at, in addition to some of the things that Commissioner Cooper's already covered. I do believe that, you know, some of the things that were talked about today are, you know, added to this mix. You know, it would be possible, I think, to look at a project that would be approvable. I'm inclined to support staff's recommendation, however, with respect to what we have sitting in front of us today. But, but again, I think to the extent that we end up with a proposal that better, kind of syncs up with these, these factors and some of the other factors that have been listed and discussed, I think we'd, you know, be open to, I know I'd be open to further consideration of a project like that. I'm just not seeing that today. I also would, I guess, state for the record that the analysis, the staff report provides with respect to the site development permit, and I guess the parking exception as well, the, you know, for the reasons that are stated in that staff report, I'd be inclined, again, to, to disagree with approving this project.
Any other comments from Commissioner at the moment? Commissioner Varlos.
I do feel for the applicant, two years in the process, although I do see on the table that's enclosed that this is not a precedence. In fact, one of the speakers who spoke, their home is built on a paper street. There are several homes built on paper streets that have very low-density residential zonings and were still allowed to be built. When I look at this list, though, I don't see any homes as large as the ones that you have planned. I do not think that this house is going to cause tree limbs to fall on people's property or on people. And if you're afraid of tree limbs, then I guess you're gonna have to cut down all the trees. And if you're afraid of cars, then maybe we should outlaw that, too. The street, the impact fees, I do have a question about impact fees. If they were to charge impact fees, would they go directly into Rockaway, or would they be used for the entire city of Pacifica?
There would be a nexus study prepared, and they would go specifically to the purpose for which they're collected. So assuming that a study would, would be done on Rockaway specifically, the, the fees would be used in that area only.
Okay. I think that's an interesting idea, the impact fees. I also, the street is very narrow. It's been encroached on for years and years. Parts of it were never built out to the full extent of the street. I don't think that this particular development will have a huge impact on the fact that Rockaway Beach is only 20 feet across. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. Let's see. So I think my starting point is, is a lot like Commissioner Nebelen's starting point, which is that general plan says it's, designates this area as VLDR. However, the, the lots are less than half an acre, so VLDR says you can't build on it. However, that, we have, we have the ability to apply that so that it's, it conforms with the Constitution and it does not, there's not taking. So the way to, from my view, the way to apply this in a way that's fair is to, I would be in support of a project, and I'd be in support of a general plan amendment to allow building on these, these lots, if the project was more in conformity with the spirit of VLDR. There's a reason why that area is VLDR. It's, you're looking for, I mean, you wanna be, you're looking for development that's less dense, that you don't have the massing. To me, that means you probably won't be able to build a 3,400-square-foot dream home for the reasons that are, that, that I think that Catherine laid out pretty well in, in the analysis, the site development permit. But I would be in favor of, of something that's, that's sort of more in conformity with, with, with the factors that are in VLDR. So perhaps a smaller home, perhaps, geez, I guess I don't wanna get too specific, but, but I'd, I'd encourage you to, to, to come back with, with, with a scaled-down proposal and work with, work with staff, 'cause I feel like they would be, I feel like they're very much in the spirit of, let's see something get built here, actually. So on the one hand, you've got, I mean, I think I've heard about like a dozen or two dozen people in the audience saying, hey, let's have a moratorium. But, you know, I'm not saying moratorium. I'm saying, let's apply the spirit of VLDR to, but to allow some, some, some building on, on, on the land. So anyway, I think I'm coming hopefully down in the middle where hopefully the, the neighborhood and, and the applicant are both upset with me, you know? So anyway, that, that, that's where I come. So, but, but my, I'm also in favor of, of the staff's recommendation with my comments there.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to ask the applicant another question, if I could, please. And this is more for my understanding. You, at one point, you scaled down your thought to one house for the two lots, and then you got, as I understood, you got kinda negative feedback even on that. Why did you not stay with that plan?
So the reason was because we were told by planning department that there, to ask for exactly what we wanted because we were going to be countered. So we wanted to start big with our ultimate intent to go smaller. We made it very clear. We sent an, a letter out to the neighborhood that we were willing to go down as, as far as 50%. But only, what we really wanted was, we, we wanted to avoid all of this. You know, we wanted to help our application move faster. It had already been stalled significantly, and we were just trying to find a way to make our application go faster, and we wanted the support of the neighborhood. We knew that was important, which is why we sent out that letter. But they rejected it. And, you know, if we knew we were gonna be countered, does it make sense for you to then say, okay, I'm gonna reduce my house by 50, only for then now you to be countered? No. Now you have to get rid of one house and reduce your other house by 50 as well. You know, it was more of like, you know, negotiating. That was, that was the pretenses or the expectations that we were given by the planning department, that we would eventually be countered on this. And we never were. Instead, we've been sent here, straight here with our application as if we really wanted two homes, which we originally did, but we've shown you that we were willing to work with the intent of very low density by sending out that letter.
All right. Go ahead.
Yes. Commissioner, tonight, I still willing to compromise, and I can work it out with the neighborhood, and I can still eliminate one house, proposing only one house.
I, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So building one home and merge those two lots as one. So by doing this, this will be in line with intent of the very low-density issue. This means I'm cutting my application to 50%, 50% less excavation, 50% less impact to light and air, 50% less impact to the environment. There will be more landscaping on the front of the house. There will be only one house, so it's not possible the houses will look the same. So by doing all this, I'm addressing a lot of the staff report comments, and I'm trying to find a solution and compromise with the city of Pacifica. Do you, you will support this project? Do I have your support for this huge compromise?
I'm afraid I'm, I'm gonna have to jump in here. That, that really is beyond the scope of what we can get to tonight at this meeting. A, a project that the commission hasn't seen, the staff hasn't reviewed, but I think the sentiment that you're expressing is, is something that, that you can convey and just to the commission, but we can't really discuss that.
Exactly. We can't approve or deny anything that's not right in front of us. I, I know you understand that part. I, in my mind, and this is only what I'm thinking, that it would be looked at, I think, in a much better light, that if you did come back with something that was just one instead of two, I mean, we, we, we still need to address the, you know, the, the VLDR issue to the low-density. I understand we need to do that, but again, we can't do that with this right now. But I, I think that if you came back in good faith with the idea, okay, I want to live here, I want to do this, and I'm willing to cut this down, I'm even maybe willing to cut the size down of that one house even. I understand you want something, but again, as my co-commissioners stated, in the, in this, in the light of, of the spirit of the VLDR, we need to look at what will fit and, and what fits into the neighborhood, what fits into the area, and what fits into that lot. So I'm not telling you what to do. I'm just trying to understand and give you my thoughts on this because I, I... I'm just trying to understand and give you my thoughts on this, because I can't get into the way it looks at right now, the way this is. But if you came back with something, I don't want to say much, much less, but you understand what I'm saying, you know? It would be, I believe it would be viewed in a much better light, and I think staff could, I don't know what staff could do, but.
So I think that, I completely understand, and I think that's where we were trying to go when we sent out that second neighborhood letter. You know, I just, the hard part is that, you know, if you're telling us that your standards don't apply and you're not telling us what the standards are, we don't know what to build. And we thought we were going to get that from the Planning Department when they told us to seek a general plan amendment petition, and they would get back to us. We thought they would get back to us with new requirements, and that never happened. So we feel like we're kind of guessing at what, at this point, at what's acceptable and what's not, and then what's to say that, you know, a few months from now, we come back and you're still not feeling it for VLDR, and also you're still feeling that, you know, our application is not consistent with the general plan. We need guidance. We're asking the city to provide us guidance, because, you know, we're kind of, we have absolutely no guidance now, because the documentation itself is inconsistent, and we need help.
I truly am in sympathy with you. I really am. And I wish this hadn't got to this point. I wish that all this was discussed prior to even coming before us, but it hasn't been. So I apologize for myself for any, any part of this that is especially upsetting to you, but also not understood. A lot, every two weeks, I get a lot of stuff that I don't understand 100 percent. So I rely upon staff. And that's kind of what I'm, and I'm sorry you didn't get the information you needed, but all I can say is maybe look at that idea. I don't know if talking, I mean, I understand staff is there to help you, and that's the bottom line that I can say.
If I may, I'm not the architect on the project, not the owner's representative. I'm just an engineer on this particular case. However, with the experience that I've had in Pacifica and the knowledge that I have of the code, I believe there may be a solution, and maybe Tina agrees with me on that. The Pacifica zoning code already has an ordinance for non-conforming lots. So if this lot is not conforming with the very low-density residential size, can a home be designed under the regulations of the non-conforming lot section of the Planning Code? I think now that they are willing to compromise, to come to one home, the two lots are merged, then we can have a lot that, following those regulations, may end up with a design that will be substantially more in agreement with the guidelines of, for the area, smaller homes, probably the same-sized home, but with a double lot and following the step-back of the hill. That may be a solution.
Okay. Yeah, but we want to start discussing.
No, no, I don't want to start discussing that. I just want to state that. We can't discuss anything that's not in front of us. So I'm going to stop right there.
All right, I just have a comment or two, and then I'll roll back. Well, first, I want to thank the applicant for their candor with regard to kind of how this project came before us. We often suspect sometimes that developers are kind of shooting high, knowing we're going to carve it, they suspect we're going to carve it back at meeting, but we don't often hear it so boldly put. My issue really doesn't have anything to do with the general plan, my first comment, but it's the driveway width, which is not something that, with a 7,500-square-foot lot, it's not something that I think is, I just don't see the necessity to provide a parking exception. So I see that, you know, this has been on the books for a long time. I imagine this has been on the books before 2013, this driveway requirement. I asked if this had been discussed in December 2013. I was looking at your chronology, and the answer was no, which leads me to wonder how much specificity there was in these discussions with the Planning Department back then. It just, I think that it's incumbent on the applicants to really understand, you know, that if you're going to come in with double the driveway width, there's got to be a good reason. I'm not seeing it. And that goes to my second point of, with the general plan. It's fairly clear to me up here, having heard the discussion, that there is a way forward for building a house here that actually meets the spirit and intent of the zoning. So I would take the comments that we've had up here to heart, and maybe there's a way forward with a redesign. All right, let's see. We had Commissioner Cooper.
Yes, I had a question for you. I mean, a lot of people, a lot of projects come before us, and they haven't cleared with the fire department on the turnarounds and whatnot. So if you were going to submit another application, I would really suggest that you deal with them as well, and try to talk to them about what that turnaround would look like and what their access would be. It's not a company you have to respond to, but it's just a fair kind of warning of that's something that tends to hold some of the projects up. The other thing that I'd like just to bring to your attention is there was a woman that did speak tonight, said she wasn't anti-develop, and she reminded that she had an 800-square-foot house on a bungalow piece of property, which was the original intent of that particular land. So, you know, I just was listening to the comments of the audience, and I thought that some of those comments were pretty important to listen to, of what might be of character and what might not be of character for that land. I can't say that one home would be of character. I can't say that, you know, a quarter of that home would be of character until something would come before us. But I was just kind of listening to the audience as well. So that's my suggestions.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you. Boys, it's a very interesting conversation we're having. Oftentimes, the applicants come in and they haven't dialogued at all with the neighbors about the project. And it leads to very, very difficult meeting. Ironically, in your case, you've dialogued a great deal with the neighbors. I would even almost say, almost too much. I would encourage you to do, because it sounds like you've gotten some questionable advice about like coming in with, you know, more than you really are okay with. My expectation when an application comes in is that the applicant has met closely with the Planning Department and has gotten, you know, feedback about what works and what doesn't, and there's a back and forth and a back and forth, and the project is scaled here and there. And eventually, there's a meeting of the minds, and the Planning Department says, okay, this is close enough, you know? And there's a good feeling, and it comes before us. And it's, the recommendation is that it's going to be approved with, you know, certain conditions, and the negotiation then tends to happen around those conditions, and they tend to be sort of minor conditions. What I'd encourage you guys to do is, rather than see if you can get sign-off from the neighbors, I'd see if you can get to a meeting of the minds with the Planning Department. It's not usual that projects come before us with a recommendation of denial. It's actually not typical. And when it does, you guys are facing a big hurdle. And for example, one of the problems is, well, you've got a condo proposal, but now we can't consider it, because it really hasn't been vetted, and it's not before us, and it's not proper for us to sort of, you know, consider stuff that hasn't been properly vetted. So anyway, what I would encourage you to do is take a step back and work with the Planning Department, and they're not your enemies. They're actually very good people. I understand that there's been some things in the past that have really sucked, and I, I don't even know. It's terrible. But we are where we are. And I don't see VLDR going away. I see that as something that you're just going to have to work with. And we're flexible, you know, because if we were to apply it to the letter, there'd be no buildable, you couldn't build on it, because your lot's not big enough. But we're not taking that approach. I don't hear us taking that approach at all. I hear us taking the approach of encouraging you to work with the Planning Department and come up with something. And the idea of like, you know, giving offers to proposals to your neighbors, I wouldn't go too far with that, because whether or not the neighbors say yes or no, that doesn't mean anything in terms of what we do, you know? Because they're not the approving agency.
Completely understood. I think we, you know, we just wanted to make sure that the neighborhood was happy with our application, and they obviously weren't, no matter what we were going to do. You know, we both respect the Planning Department very much, but what we felt like is, as soon as this legal issue came up, things changed. And we didn't feel that, we didn't feel like there was any negotiating. It was more like, can you build or can you not build kind of thing? And it became unfortunately very bureaucratic, and we never got the feeling that we could even offer to really merge our lots and do that with the Planning Department. I don't know if it was a joke, but, you know, when we were talking with them and we asked what we could do, they just said, do you know any neighbors who can buy any land? I mean, so that was, you know, that kind of made us feel like really there wasn't anything that we can negotiate with them, so we had to go to our neighbors. So here we are.
Sorry about all that. Sorry about all that.
Okay. I don't know if there's any more comments. I'm going to, I think we're probably done, unless you've got a question.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay. I just want to say that, just from my perspective as Chair, I think that the requirements of the general plan seemed fairly clear to me. The zoning seemed fairly clear to me. I'm unconvinced that anything undue was said or done by the Planning Department, so I just want to get that on the record. Commissioner Nebelen.
Well, again, I'm very open-minded to whatever we see in the future, but I'm ready to make a motion for this evening. And that motion would be that the Planning Commission recommended the City Council to deny the general plan amendment, GPA 9115, and deny site development permit PSD 78814 and parking exception PE 16115 without prejudice by adopting the attached resolution, incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Okay. Commissioner Gordon.
I second it. And also, just to let you know, without prejudice means you're not prejudiced from coming back and proposing something else. So I second with that clarification.
Okay. Commissioner Varlos, did you have anything where you're going to second? Okay. All right, we've had a motion and a second. Okay. The project has been denied unanimously. Anyone agree by the action of the, well, do we do the aggrieved? We don't?
They can appeal.
Do we do the aggrieved language? I think we do, probably. Yeah. Anyone agree by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the City Council. All right. We are going to move on. We have a second item for public hearing tonight. So in the interests of time and consideration of the other applicant, please do file out quickly, or let's keep the noise level down. Actually, let's just take a two-minute break. I see that's not going to happen. Two-minute break.
Hey, Rich, I want to make sure I'm going to leave.
So the next item on our public hearing is for a use permit and site development permit. Everyone's up here. And we'll need the folks at the back to either file out or get quieter for consideration of the next people. Thank you. All right. Use permit, site development permit filed by the owner and applicant, David Melton, to construct a single-family dwelling, 3,300 square feet, with an attached garage of 600 square feet, and a second dwelling unit with an attached garage of 300 square feet on a vacant lot at 21 Malavir Drive. A negative declaration was previously adopted for this project, and the proposed action tonight is to approve as conditioned. Staff report, please.
Before we consider this announcement, I'd just like to make that Dave Melton sold me my home probably 11 years ago, in an arms-length transaction. But I have not had any personal communication with Dave since then, so I will be voting on this issue, and I don't have any favor or denial for the project.
Thank you.
Good evening, Chair Campbell and Commissioners. For the record, I still am Catherine Farbstein, Assistant Planner, and make the presentation for this project tonight. It helps when she does the minutes, so. Before you tonight is a project to construct a single-family dwelling of 3,300 square feet and a second unit of 850 square feet on a 1.4-acre lot at 21 Malavir Drive. The subject site was created more than 10 years ago, when a four-lot subdivision was approved by the City Council on appeal. Neighbors concerned about Pacifica challenged the approved subdivision, and a settlement agreement was reached. Conditions of approval for satisfying the outstanding requirements of the subdivision agreement and the settlement agreement are recommended by staff. As described in the staff report, this lot has two zoning designations. The portion of the lot containing the second unit is actually Zoned R1, and that's, again, at the corner of Sheila, Malavir Drive. In this case, the second unit has had, wait a minute, and a second unit is permitted by right if all the requirements are satisfied. In this case, the second unit has satisfied all those requirements. The information on the plans regarding the second unit is basically for informational purposes. However, the primary unit is within the AB5 zoning designation, which requires approval of a site development permit and use permit. The owner and applicant, David Melton, is here tonight, and he was one of the parties to the original settlement agreement. Staff is recommending conditional approval of the use permit and site development permit for the proposed single-family dwelling. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Okay. Commissioner Cooper.
Oh, I just was making the announcement before then.
Oh, that was my fault. Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for that helpful presentation. Question for you about, we got an email from Tom Clifford on this project. I don't know if you had a chance to see it on previous concrete.
He, he came into the counter, and we talked about it a little bit. There is concrete paving for the driveway, for the walkway, and then his, also the backyard area. And it is called out as impervious, which means it doesn't allow the water to go through. It is a 1.4-acre lot. A good portion of the property is going to have to stay undeveloped because of the settlement agreement. However, if the Commission would like, you could add a condition of approval to require that those areas be redesigned with pervious, pervious pavers for the patio, probably some kind of pervious concrete for the driveway. You could add that as a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. If I'm not mistaken, though, that all the drainage goes to the detention ponds. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct.
Thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more questions for staff, so if the applicant wants to come up, he has 10 minutes to present his project.
So this project started about 10 years ago, and during the beginning of it, we accomplished most of what we set out to do. We kind of, you know, ran into a couple setbacks. We kind of, you know, ran into a couple setbacks, so we didn't finish a couple of the houses. One of the houses on Lot 4 was built. That house did not have to go into the drainage system, the detention ponds, so the other two, you know, were never built. Right now, kind of revived the project to finish it up. We've got a couple outstanding issues, which is the street light and some monuments, which are in process. The monuments have been laid out, and I believe the street light's been purchased. I'm currently working on the detention ponds, which I got a permit for early March, and that's pretty much where we're at. I'm just trying to, you know, get the design of this house approved. The other two houses have been approved. The one was built, and the one was previously approved a few months ago. And I have answered any questions that you might have. As for the impervious driveways, those are actually going to be... The water's being caught, and on those driveways, you know, it's not just going off into anywhere, and that should end up going into the detention pond area, which is being built.
Thanks for answering that. Let's see if we have any... It looks like we have some questions. Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I was looking at the overall site plan and some of the elevations here, and on the south side of the property, it looks like it slopes down towards that backside. What's it sloping down into? Is it being diverted back into the ponds, or is it just going off into the natural landscaping?
Well, right now, it's just going to a natural landscape, but when I, you know, submit the final plans, I had doing a little bit of change on some drainage on that. The house is going to be sitting on piers, so...
Oh, okay.
Down at the bottom, there's... Where the actual slope goes down, it's about four feet right now from the property line, so I was going to put some drains around that will go to the detention ponds.
Okay, that was my concern. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to confirm, I was reading what you've completed on the items, and I just wanted to confirm about the... All the ponds are done, and that whole drainage?
All the... The big pipes are... They're all put around the cul-de-sac, which that's what catches the house and the impervious surfaces. And then, right now, currently, is I'm doing the detention ponds, which have to be completed and inspected and signed off before we could actually start the homes.
I just want to make it for record. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. I don't see any more questions, but we might have some after we discuss things. I don't see any cards up here for public comment, so I'm just going to bring it back Commissioner Evans.
I might as well start off. I, too, was seeing the amount of area at first stopped by the fact that it was pervious and not impervious, or impervious, but with the understanding that it's bound for the ponds, I have no problem with that now at all. That's what those ponds are there for, and I appreciate that, because we are trying to keep, as we all know what that whole area back there is along Lindemar Boulevard, it is an issue. So thank you for your diligence on that. So, but I'm in favor of this project. It looks nice. It's not oversized or anything like that, so I think it'll fit in nicely.
Commissioner Gordon.
Thank you, Chair. I, too, am in favor of the project. It's interesting that we're now at the tail end of a long history, and we get to sort of see everything all smoothed out now. But I mean, I guess I just want to acknowledge that this has been through a great deal, and I've got no problems with it now. It's... I think it's a fine project.
Yeah. Commissioner Nebelen.
I would just echo what I've heard from my colleagues, particularly some of the colleagues who, I guess, have had a chance to sort of live this out over the course of some significant period of time. I think the staff report laid out real well the basis for being in favor of this project.
Commissioner Gordon.
I'll make a motion unless there's other comments. Nope? Okay. I move that the planning commission find that the project substantially conforms to the development considered in the adopted negative declaration, approve site development permit PSD-79615, and use permit UP-4915 for the proposed single-family dwelling at 21 Malavir Drive by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Commissioner Evans.
I'll second that motion.
All right. We've had a motion and a second. Please vote. That passes unanimously. Congratulations, you have an approved project. Anyone agree by the action of the planning commission has 10 calendar days to appeal this decision in writing to the city council. All right. That concludes the public hearings for tonight. Onwards to communications. Commission communications. Anyone... Whoa, we got a lot. Commissioner Cooper.
Yeah, I would... I'd like to thank Catherine for all the work that she's done. I'm going to miss her not dropping off my package anymore at my house. But, you know, the thoroughness, as I've been on the commission, the thoroughness of the packages have just been excellent, so I really appreciate all your hard work in putting these together, and it's really informative to us to help us make decisions up here. So thank you and good luck in your future endeavors.
Commissioner Vardalas.
That's exactly what I wanted to say. I'll be short and just say that. Thank you very much.
It's a group effort. Tina's not here, so I will pass it along. She reads all the staff reports occasionally. Christian, my co-chair, also just pulled in. I will pass it along to both of us.
Well, I will just say congratulations, since we're going in order. That's awesome, and thanks for all of your assistance over the last couple of years I've been involved in the planning commission.
Commissioner Gordon.
25 years. Oh, my God. It's just a long time. I'm very, very sad. I'm happy for you, but I'm sad for me and for all of us. We're not going to get a chance to enjoy your good works, which were always excellent. And anyway, it's going to... I'll miss you very much.
Commissioner Evans.
Thank you, Chair. I, too, am just... Well, number one, I'm sad that you're leaving, because you were the person that, when I had a question or needed something, found out that nobody else could find out, you did it. And I think of a couple of times. So thank you so much. Your work has always been excellent. We live by these things, and if I didn't have this, I wouldn't be here. I'm sorry. But thank you, and from one retiree to another, almost, way to go. Way to go. Congratulations. Thank you.
And, yeah, really, thank you so much. Every time you came to the house to provide me the packet of material, I just always felt like this warm glow of like, I'm in good hands. I'm in very good hands. You're going to be here. Everything's going to be okay. So really, I've appreciated your service to the city for almost 10 years that I've been working with you and...
Oh, your time's up already. Look at that. She's ready to retire.
Yeah, she's like, really, wrap this up. I'm out of here. So I will. Good luck with your next endeavor.
I have to say one thing. The smile of dropping the packet off Friday was, I think, a little larger than yours.
She was very wide.
All right. Wow. All right. Staff communications.
I've got a brief one. I just wanted to let the commission know that on Thursday, we got... The city got an initiative submitted for development at the quarry that is intended to go on this November ballot. I'm not sure if anyone's aware of this already. I know that the community's been talking about it a bit. There were some surveys done over the last month or so about this. We're still looking at the initiative, but the basics of it would be allowing development so long as it's within certain parameters. As you probably know, the quarry currently is zoned by initiative to not permit residential use. This would permit some residential use within certain parameters. Anyhow, it just came in Thursday. We're still reviewing it and looking over the ballot title and summary and such, but wanted to let you know. It's probably going to come to you... They're also going to come in with entitlements, is the plan, and do the two in parallel, and there's probably going to be a study session on those entitlements coming before you in April.
So do they give a general site use plan along with that initiative about what they want to do with how much residential, how much commercial percentages and all that?
The way that the initiative is drafted, it would allow for a lifting of the residential limitation within certain restrictions. However, they would still have to come in and process normal entitlements to do that. There would be secret review and so on, general plan amendments, specific plan amendments, zoning amendments to conform with that. But it would just allow for that development to happen within certain boundaries, no more than so many square feet of this, no more than so many units of that.
Cool.
Anyhow, that will probably come before you in April for a study session at a fairly conceptual level.
All right. Commissioner Evans.
I just have one question, and not on that subject. What is the current status of 310 Esplanade? Is it still under yellow tag?
It is still under yellow tag. There is an appeal hearing of that yellow tag. The owner and one of the residents and sort of a combined group of other residents, it's a little bit more nebulous, have appealed the yellow tag for that building. That hearing is going to be in this room on Wednesday night before the Emergency Preparedness and Safety Commission, but the building is still yellow-tagged, so it's still not permitted for people to be in it, use it for residents.
Thank you.
Sure.
All right. I believe we have reached the adjournment time. Commissioner Gordon.
I move to adjourn this meeting.
All right. Commissioner Vardalas.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Please vote. All right. Passes unanimously. The meeting is over. Thank you.
What jurisdiction does the Oakland State Task Force have?
Job-maintaining orders.
Nice guy.
What do they rule?
They don't, right?